Kansas State Board of Education in January the 13th, 2015. First of all, Jim, we'd like to welcome you to the board.
Thank you.
And thank you for showing up today.[23.46][23.46](Laughter). We appreciate that. Board members, we do not have a hand-raising device because I don't have the main one on this computer, so we will be operating today even after our appointment of a chairman with hand-raising. Your real hand, not the hand on the computer. And so our chair will have to work that way at least until noon, and then we'll see what IT does after that, whether they need it overnight or not. Back of the room, those of you in the back, we want to thank you. We really appreciate the partnership that you provide for us, and thank you very much. And the news media that's here, we like to see your faces every day, and you're one way that we use for communication to the public, and we greatly appreciate that service that you provide. Thank you very much. Roll call, Peggy. Are we all here? Okay, we're all here and accounted for. The mission statement. "The mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous, quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents." And now if we can have a moment of silence, please. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, and just as for all. First item on the agenda today is the election of the board chair. At this time, the chair will accept nominations for the chairman of the State Board of Education. Steve Roberts.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Jim McNeese to be our chair for the next term.
Thank you. Jim, is there a second? Kathy Bush, second. Are there any other nominations? If not, let's vote. All in favor, Jim McNeese. Eight to two. All opposed? One, two. Okay. Eight, two. Jim, let's switch chairs. Congratulations. And congratulations to Jim McNeese.
First thing is, don't push your computer too far. There we go. That was it. Okay. First of all, thank you very much for the honor to be the chair of the board for the next two years. It has been a pleasure to work with you over the last two years as board member, and I am looking forward to the opportunity. I think the state board has done a fantastic job in terms of governing and leading, discussing, and making some very tough decisions, listening to each other, and coming up with, I think, excellent focus for the future of education in Kansas. With that said, I would call for a motion to approve the agenda. Deana, second by Kathy. We have a motion in front of us to approve the agenda. Any discussion? John?
Thank you. I would like to pull item H on the consent, just to vote on separately.
Okay, can you say that again, please, John?
Item H on the consent agenda.
Item H on the consent agenda, so 24H. Okay, thank you very much. Any other? Okay, we have a... Now here's a order. Do I have to get a second on John's?
No, you have to ask who chose your motion. They're willing to accept it.
Willing to accept it. Are you willing to accept that, Deana? Thank you. Kathy? Okay. All right, we have a motion before us to approve the agenda, pulling 24H. Just raise your right hand and signify approval. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Steve? Nine, four, against. One against. Nine to one, with Steve Roberts voting against it. We'll call for an approval of the December minutes. We approve the agenda nine to one, correct. Approval of the December minutes. I have a motion for that. Janet, thank you. Second. Ken Willard, second. It's been moved and seconded. We approve the minutes for the December meeting. Any discussion? And we'll call for the vote. Please signify by raising your right hand. That's unanimous, 10-0. Thank you. We now have the election of the vice chair, you know, for this position, which you would take a nominations. Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate Carolyn Campbell.
We have a motion to nominate Carolyn Campbell as the vice chair, seconded by Deana Horst. We have also other nominations. We have one nomination before us. Seeing none, then I'll call for a vote for Carolyn Campbell to be vice chair. Please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. That's a 10-0 vote. No? Oh, opposed. I'm sorry, John. I thought you had your hand up. Too quick there. Okay. Better glasses. Thank you. So that's a 9-1 vote, with John Bacon voting against. Okay? Thank you, and congratulations, Carolyn. We look forward to working with you and... What's that? And we move now. Yes. There goes the neighborhood. As... You switch, yes. Keep me going on. Seating order. Right here. Oh, nice. Should've looked for that. Do we need a break? Okay. Okay. All right. We're going to take about a five-minute break at this time and prepare for our seating arrangements determination, which will happen at, let's go at a quarter after 10:00. Is that all right? Thank you. We're back onto the agenda. Before we move into the next item on our agenda, I'd like to confirm that the seating arrangements that you have selected are indeed the ones that you want, and we'll start here with John Bacon and Janet Waugh. Those are your seats that you are selecting for the next two years. Okay? Thank you. And Ken Willard? Yes. That's good. Sally Cobble? Good deal. Kathy Bush and Deana Horst and Steve Roberts are agreeable to those seats as well. And Jim Porter, nice choice.
This is really where I wanted to be. They were all working together.
You were just hoping he could be between Deana and I, right?
As we move into the agenda, the next item we have before us is our legislative representatives and coordinators, and I'd ask for nominations for the legislative coordinator and assistant legislative coordinator. Nominations. Kathy?
Nominate Ken Willard.
Ken Willard's been nominated. Is there a second? Steve Roberts? We have a nomination for the legislative coordinator position of Ken Willard, moved and seconded. Are there other nominations? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Raise your right hand in support of Ken Willard continuing as he has as our legislative coordinator for another year, two years. Hold them up so we can see them. We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven... We have seven. Oh, and we vote... Ken's going to vote for himself. Good. Okay. I was worried there for a moment. Okay, we have nine, four. Those opposed? One, two. Oh, it was eight to two. I'm sorry. Let's make sure we have Janet and Sally in opposition. Okay? Ken, congratulations. Thank you very much for taking that on. I take nominations now for our legislative assistant coordinator. Sally?
Deana.
Deana Horst has been nominated. Do I have a second? Carolyn Campbell, seconds. Discussion? Okay? And any other nominations? If you please raise your right hand in favor of Deana Horst being our assistant. And it's unanimous, 10-0. Okay? Congratulations, Deana and Ken, and thank you for your service the past two years. We look forward to you representing us again and reporting back. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval to designate Mark Ferguson as the State Board of Education Attorney and Peggy Hill as the board secretary. Again, this one, motion during the last reorganization, and I'd call for a vote. Those in favor of Mark and Peggy continuing their roles as attorney and secretary, respectively, please raise your right hand. If you're in favor...
Do we need a motion?
Oh. Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought it was just...
It says election.
Yes, okay.
I'm with...
Deana moves. Excuse me for a misstep there. Deana moves. Okay, and looking for a second, Kathy Bush, seconds. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept Mark Ferguson as our board attorney and Peggy Hill as the board secretary for the next year. Those in favor, please raise your right hand. We have eight affirmative. Those opposed? No, excuse me. Did you... And, okay, Ken, you're going to abstain. So we have eight, four, one opposed, John Bacon, and Ken Willard abstains, so we have an eight, one, one vote. Thank you very much, and congratulations to Mark and to Peggy as they continue in their Okay, we're a little ahead of schedule here. Well, we have the Citizens Open Forum coming up and begins at 10:30. We have one person who has signed up to speak, and that's great, but I think you'll be faster than 10:30. So is it appropriate, or could I move forward a little bit in terms of dealing with another item that's on the agenda? Is that okay? Election of board members to other positions. I guess I would ask for nominations to serve on the Board Policy Committee. We need three representatives. This is a two-year term. The elected positions of representatives on the Coalition Innovative Districts Board are valid until January of 2017, and the only casea term is open through this year and is currently valid till June 30th, and I believe that's 2016, isn't it?
2016.
Yes. Okay. So nominations, I guess I would take to serve on the Board Policy Committee. Help me here. I don't want to get ahead, but who has presently been serving on that?
Kathy. Janet and who? Carol.
And Carolyn. So Carolyn, Janet, Carolyn, and Kathy have been serving on that committee to this date, and do we take nominations one at a time? Okay. I would be open to nominations for being on the policy committee. I think we'll do it one position at a time. Anyone want to get nominated for a position on the policy committee? I have to say right off, I think the policy committee has done a really good job the last two years, and I am conning you into doing it again. Jim Porter's been nominated to be on the policy committee. And Kathy Bush, seconds. We can... Other... Well, that's one nomination. We can go ahead and vote on that. Let's go ahead and vote on that. Those in favor of Jim Porter being on the policy committee, please signify by raising your right hand. I see a unanimous vote on that, but I'll ask for any opposition. I thought I counted 10. So Jim Porter is now the first person on the policy committee. Congratulations, Jim. Any other committees we want to put Jim on? I would... We need two more. So we need two more nominations. One more nomination would go that way, one at a time. Deana? Deana Horst has a nomination.
I was going to nominate Kathy Bush.
Kathy Bush's name has been put in nomination to be on a policy committee. Do I have a second? Ken Willard, seconds. Any discussion? No discussion. Those in favor of Kathy Bush serving on the policy committee for the next two years, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? I believe that was 10-0, Peggy. Third person for the policy committee? Carolyn Campbell.
I'm sitting next to her. She may hit me. But we had a wonderful chair of our policy, and I nominate Janet Waugh.
Janet Waugh's been nominated by Carolyn Campbell and seconded by Kathy Bush. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? That's 10-0. Congratulations to Jim, Kathy, and Janet and serving on the policy committee, and thank you to the policy committee over the last two years for the job that you did. You did a really splendid job bringing our policies up to date. At this time? Okay, thank you, Janet. You can be the chairperson again. Thank you.
That's not what I said.[1241.82][1241.82](Laughter).
You have to... The chair... Well, we'd have to change the stationery. Okay, I think we've met the requirement in terms of time for open... Citizens Open Forum. Isn't there something I read? I now declare the Citizens Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting open at 10:29 a.m. The state board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the state board. The state board asks that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The state board also asks that each speaker focuses on their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall have... Be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification only. Our first speaker today is Stephanie Dixon of Kansas City. Stephanie?
Hi, good morning. Yes, good. Okay. Hi, good morning. First of all, I'm super nervous. I normally just talk to K through 12 students, so this is a very big honor for me to be here, so thank you. I'd like to start off with a small story. This particular student was raised during the '70s and '80s. She had physical education in elementary school except for Thursdays. Every Thursday she tried to play sick, but her mom was a preschool teacher, and she never won that battle. In fifth grade came the dreaded whoopee cushion incident with Mrs. Simpson, and field day was taken away from her. You might have called that her worst day ever. Junior year, summer school, she took three classes so she could be NCAA qualified and was able to take five PE classes her senior year. Went to Baker on a track and field scholarship and didn't see the fine print to run cross-country also. Was profoundly impacted by Dr. Bill Nguyen Swander. I guess others in this room were also. I would like to introduce myself and the girl in the story. I am Stephanie Dixon, and I am the Physical Education Teacher Leader for Kansas City Kansas Public Schools. I am the K through 12 support person for the district, physical education teachers, and for the general education classroom teachers. As a girl, I came to school with movement on my mind, and now I have a dream job where I get to help mold our school district. What happened to that time when I was a kid? We all know what happened. Standardized tests, test scores, politics, et cetera. Over my 16 years of teaching, you learn ways to make your job vital to the whole child. According to Shape America, our National Association research confirms that students perform better in school when they are emotionally and physically healthy. They miss fewer classes, they're less likely to engage in risky behaviors, they concentrate more, and they attain higher test scores. Physical education teachers in KCK align their lesson plans to the state, national, and common core standards. Come into any gym in our district, and you'll see letters on beanbags for literacy, numbers on the walls for math, middle school students solving algebraic problems on scooters, and high school students calculating caloric intake. We have also empowered our classroom teachers with physical activity brain breaks that are used when students get antsy or lose focus, which is about every 20 minutes. So I like all the breaks you took, Mr. McNeese. We have structured recess activities for indoor and outdoor time. Classroom teachers now realize the importance of movement for their students and for themselves for continued learning throughout the whole day. So what happened all those years ago? It doesn't matter. It has shaped me the way I am and I want to be. It matters where we go now. What you decide matters to the whole child. In the KCK school district, we give lots of opportunities for outside classroom opportunities like chief sports lab, body venture, fitness testing for grades third through 12th grade, even when they're not in physical education classrooms. We work for the whole child by collaborating with community entities, school nurses, social workers, and nutritional services. We give our physical education teachers lots of valuable professional development on our guaranteed viable curriculum, and we teach to our national standards. And I write and apply for every grant that comes across my desk because in KCK, we inspire excellence every grown-up, every child, every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I represented the Kansas Association of Physical Health, Education, Recreation, and Dance. And I also brought each one of you a pedometer so you all can get up and move.
We sit along. That's very nice. Thank you. Steve Roberts? Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask a quick question about the national standards. You said we teach to the national standards specifically. Can you tell me what those national standards are or where they come from?
The Shape America guides our national standards, and we apply them to the different curriculum resources that we have in our school district that we just implemented two years ago, which is a Spark curriculum. It's a nationally and state-based standards-based education. And Kansas actually, this summer is rewriting the physical education standards for our state.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, and I'd just remind the board that last year we did, in fact, approve new standards for physical education, if I remember right. We did? Thank you. It was two years ago, actually. I think it was two years ago. Are there any other speakers for... Scheduled for today or have asked? If not, the state board's Citizens Open Forum is closed at 10... 34? 10:34 a.m. We would like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the board. The state board will determine if any of the issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. The next item on our agenda is a review of appointments to be made by the chairman and the commissioner. I believe a single-page committee sheet is in each board member's folder to indicate which committee's individuals are interested in being on. Members should list their top three items in their agenda packet. And I believe that will... If you'll take a moment and do that now, that would be a big help. If there's more than one you're interested in, we're not going to... Yes? Peggy?
There was some discussion in the past about the charter and virtual advisory council, so that is listed on the interest sheet. And in your packet where it gave a description of all the committees, there was a line on there that probably, based on board consensus, if they want to go ahead and add that officially. Brad has a little more background on that.
Okay, Brad?
It just happened that several years ago, we had a board member that was serving on the virtual advisory committee, and when the virtual and the charter committees came together, that board member just stayed on as a board representative, and that was Dave Dennis at the time. But then when he did not run for election again, it just kind of dropped off the radar because that was never an official board position. But the advisory charter committee has said that they would like to have a board member set on that if the board desires to add that position to the list because it was valuable having a board member on there.
I'll give you a few moments to take a look at your list. Oh, Mr. Willard?
Brad, that... Tell me again the name of that committee.
Brad, that, tell me again, the name of that committee? It's not on the sheet, right?
Yeah, it's the second one on the list. We went ahead and added it on the list here in case
All right.
the Board desired to have someone serve on that.
Want to take a moment and review your list and then I would ask Peggy to collect those lists in just a moment? Okay, Peggy, if you would collect those at this time, please? I want to thank the Board Members for their past service on these committees. I know they take a lot of time and effort on your part and they're very important to the operation and the success of our state in education. And really much appreciated your commitment to serve on these committees. The announcement for the decisions, you know, will be, which committees you'll be on will be announced at our Wednesday meeting. The next item on our agenda is a resolution approving the established 2015 Board Meeting Dates. If you look at your packet, you have that, those dates in there. We talked about them at the last meeting. And I would call and note to you that, you know, pay specific attention to some of the dates and, that are not in their traditional or regular place. Is that in here? I don't have the date. I think April 16th. That's after. And April and November are, we have some days that we're meeting at, on Wednesday, Thursday or Thursday and Friday, as opposed to the traditional Tuesday and Wednesday. I would ask for a motion to approve the meeting dates for 2015 for the State Board of Education. Sally Cobble moves that we accept it. Need a second? Steve Roberts seconds the motion. Any discussion? Okay, John? Okay, well, John Bacon has asked that we delay that just for a moment while he works on the, on the item. Okay, thank you, John. Peggy, can you review the motion that's on the floor? I believe Ken Willard... Oh, moved, Sally moved the motion and Ken seconded. Steve did. And Steve Roberts seconded the motion to approve the calendar as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Willard?
I know that there's still some problem on it, on John's behalf. I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to, to...
Oh, let's, let's talk about it. John, what's, what?
Well, October is, is, I just won't be here. But I thought there was also an issue with, potentially with the National Conference for NASB, if we did it later in that week, so I'm not sure it worked for anybody else.
I thought I checked that and I thought the National Conference was the next week. But let me check real quick. It's a good question.
Yeah, 22nd, 23rd.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good question, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And the, other problems, John, that we could possibly remedy?
No, I think all the other months are fine, just that October meeting, I won't, I will not be here.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion? Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since John said he won't be here in October, I will not be here in June. I have had plans for a year, for years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for sharing. Other discussion or information? Okay, hearing none, I would call for a vote. Please raise your right hand to approve the State Board of Education 2015 Meeting Dates as presented. I see, thank you. Those opposed? 10-0. Thank you very much. We're kind of, happily, we are ahead of schedule, kind of significantly. And thank you for moving through as we have. I apologize if I, I kind of rushed the assignments, but at this time, we'd like to take about a 10-minute break and come back. We are looking at moving some agenda items from the afternoon up and into the morning here, so we can continue to move the meeting along. So let's take a 10-minute break and come back at 10:55. Thank you. Okay, if we could find the Board Members? Thanks for coming back, Mr. Porter. We didn't scare you off already. Okay, if we could have the Board get back together again, we'll begin our, continue our morning agenda. I think we'll go ahead and get started. The next item on our agenda is the Commissioner's Report. Brad, you're on.
Okay, I'm passing around some handouts for you. And not sure I can talk and count at the same time, but I'm going to try. The thing that's coming around right now is just kind of a front-back sheet that is just some highlights of your accomplishments over the last year. I mean, that's not in the entirety, all the work of the Board, but we just went through the minutes, the agendas from the last year, just to bullet some highlights for you to let you know some of the accomplishments, so when, it was a busy year. I think the Board has a lot to be proud of your work. As you go through them, we have them by month, clear from a year ago in January. A lot of work around licensure regulations, around ESI regulations, standards. So this is just more for your information, so when you're out communicating with your, locally back home, you can share with them some of your accomplishments. The other stuff and the main part of what I just wanted to visit with you about is where we are at with the community conversations. You're going to have three sheets of information. The one coming around right now are the locations. We have a couple places, Arc City and Kansas City, where we're still looking at the actual facility, but the dates and everything are confirmed. But the majority of them, it tells you what facility it's also going to be at. We are, this morning, actively putting on our website, all this information that'll be linked, so you can communicate. There's another sheet that says Talking Points. And Dale, Randy and I, along with a lot of people in this agency, have been working quite a bit to try to move this forward as quickly as possible. We will start communicating this afternoon. After you receive this information, we'll be communicating through ListServes. Be meeting with Council of Superintendents tomorrow. We're working with every way we can find to get the message out. We actually, I know one individual, well, he, he was my best friend from high school and I named my son after him. He actually is in charge of all the radio stations from Junction City down to Hutchison on West, so we're taking advantage of an old friendship. So we'll be doing, you know, wherever we can, we need your input on ideas of how to message out. The theme that was chosen was Kansas Children, Kansas Future. Randy's working right now. We've got some questions here that they will be, we want to value people's time, so it'll be a very intentional two hours of group work. We hope to get business, higher ed, parents. We provided you a sheet of just some talking points for you to communicate with, through, your messages when you go back home, how, who to reach out to, what to share with them about the purpose, what we want to gather. So it's, it's just a lot of work of trying to put this all together. And Randy is going to be using his vacation time and we'll, be a lot of windshield time, but I think it's going to be very much worth it. So what I wanted to do is just spend a few minutes or a little bit of time trying to answer some of your questions or collect some ideas with you on, on things that we can do to help message this.
Sally Cobble?
Brad, I know you and I've had this discussion before, but, you know, when you're wanting the public to come, I'm really having a trouble with the times that we're having this. At 9:00 in the morning and at 1:00 in the afternoon. If we're targeting parents and, and the public and, you know, I've just, when I ran those focus groups, you know, three for, I, all three of mine, I ended up, I had over 60 people. But I ran them in the evening and I had a cross-section of people. I don't know who I'm going to get to come at 9:00 in the morning, it's business. And super, you know, teachers can't come. Maybe I'm the only one that is concerned about it. Maybe we ought to start there. I'm having a real problem with the time of day.
To address the time, and that was a huge challenge, you know, we're, we're looking at 13 of them and this time of year between, you know, we really looked at the calendar on weekends on, and if you just did it on Saturdays, it would go till June. We looked at evenings, but when you're trying to get school people and stuff and there's ballgames every Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, it was just, we also looked back at other, when Alexa did this and what kind of attendance. Our, our goal is that, and we're going to visit with the Council of Superintendents tomorrow, is that superintendents and educators back home intentionally reach out to their chambers, their rotaries and, and get a, if we could have schools bring a couple vans that have some site council members, some parents, bring a few teachers, bring a few students, bring it, but I think in a collection, for example, if, if at Hutchison, we get 20 school districts to bring a dozen people that they encourage to bring along, then we would have a good selection. The hardest thing we struggled with, not only facilities in the evenings, but all the school activities during this time of year. So we, we hope it works. But yeah, we spent most of our time trying to figure out what would be the best, that's why we only wanted it two hours. To be very intentional, be very aggressive at the meeting of what we want and get their input, but yet value their time.
Brad, will we be using social media in any way, in form, collecting data?
One thing we've looked at is when we're out at these meetings, whether or not we want to use technology, that's still on the table. The problem is that we find in a lot of times, you get it out there and then the, the internet's not working, you know? So our plan right now is to have some really nice professional-looking ways to collect it, but people working at a table. But we are still looking at, you know, you can use from your smartphones to your tablets to be able to, to provide the input and we're still looking at that. That's part of the planning yet.
Right. In the superintendent search, we had online opportunities for people to provide feedback and I'd hope we would do that again.
And we are also in the planning, look, because we're still planning it, but we're also looking at for people that were not able to attend, a way for people, just kind of like the Commissioner's search, people to be able to give their input even though they weren't. So yes, that, we are still looking at that.
It sounds like we're relying on, on superintendents to get out the word to their communities for site councils and people who are available to be there and, and to get teachers there. Because it really is, having it during, as Sally said, during the daytime like that, it, it just crosses a whole lot of people off the, the list of those who could participate. So having alternative ways, but also for school districts to provide teachers, especially teachers... teacher representatives to be there, and folks, and parents from the site council. I think this is big enough that people could look at modifying their schedules in some way during the day, and I hope they would, but I do encourage superintendents in the districts to take the lead on that. Like you said, of each district, superintendent got out and got board members and site councils and PTAs, and provided transportation, that would really help. This is a great opportunity for us as a state Board of Education, to hear what's really going on out in the field, to get their feedback. And I'd encourage all the board members to make sure that they're there, and as hosting and such, and if you have a chance to go to some neighboring ones as well. I realize I'm probably not gonna go to Sibley, but I'm sure gonna try to get to some of the ones around me, and maybe even Sibley, who knows?
Well, just to follow up, a couple other things that we have in the works, we're reaching out, Topeka has an association of business that includes the dentistry association, the state realtors association, so there's a whole host, and we're reaching out to them for them to message across the state to all of their, you know, the Kansas Bankers Association, to get the message through that venue. Also working with higher ed, we want, reaching out to them to be able to send people to the location, working with Andy on that. So, I mean, there's a lot in the hopper right now. The biggest thing is messaging to get the people there.
Great. Ken Willard?
I think the concern about having them during the day is a legitimate concern, but I understand the difficulty of navigating it. I'm wondering if your connection with the radio stations is gonna be able to get us on for some radio talk shows or whatever, to kind of get the word out and let people know about the importance of taking a little time out of your time, day one time, to come and talk with us.
Yeah, we've, I was on the phone with them, driving in this morning, even reaching out to Randy to see if they could do some interviews, or, you know.
I'm sure Hutch would do that.
Oh, yeah.
And I, but I don't know where else does that. Hutch does it regularly.
Right. There's a hub out of Colby, there's one out of Dodd City, there's one out of Hutchison.
I just think that might be a good way to get it out to people that are not normally gonna be
Very good.
in tune with what we're doing, or, yeah.
Other comments? Dina, Horst?
Well, I would add to what Ken said, and say that there are a number of small radio stations based in, like Clay Center, and areas like that, that may also, I know they have some talk shows, so there's a multitude of media that I think we want to include everybody and not exclude anyone. And even smaller newspapers, I think, would be another way of getting input from some of our more rural communities as well.
We are sending messages to all of our media, whenever we do
The same media stream that you always do.
So there's a lot still in development of this. I just wanted you to get some, these were actually printed this morning. They'll be all linked on our website, and we'll continue. The very first one will be a conversation with the, at the Kansas Association of School Boards Governmental Relations Network.
Right.
That evening, when they bring the legislators in, they're working with us, and they're going to give us time for a couple hundred board members to sit and have conversations with the legislators that come. We'll be messaging to them that we can let them know, here's what we're getting ready to do. We're gonna go across the state, we're going to give them the same questions, get some input from them, let them have some dialogue with their school board members, and then hopefully at the end of it, the two are, then have time back with the legislature to share what we've learned. So there's still a lot of work in process on this, but we didn't want to wait till the fall, or, we thought it was the right time to get out and get this input.
Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. Well, I just have, I know I'm sort of repeating what's been said, but I'm very much concerned about our communities of our, first of all, of our teachers. Our districts, their budgets are so that I just, I'm really concerned if our superintendents are gonna be able to find money to pay for substitute teachers, because, to be there. But we need, these timeframes, neither one of them is gonna help get teachers there. And so it would have been nice, I think, to have, if we, and I realize that makes it a long day for Dr. Watson and for you all that's doing it, but if we'd had to change that afternoon one from four to something, then a lot of our teachers would come, because we, I want to hear their voice, and then I want my parents that would be willing to come, and folks working, working two jobs, they can't take off, they've got, neither one of these timeframes is gonna help. Some of the people that really care, that really want the best for their children, they're not gonna be able to come to these community conversations. So when we say "community," sometimes I'm thinking we need to, that's, we should change that to informational conversation, because our people, our parents, aren't going to have a voice unless we have, some churches might bring, I know Wichita was good one year, there was something in the Capitol, and that some, someone paid for a bus, and they brought the ordinary person. And this is who I think we're gonna lose, the voice of the ordinary person, and not that my teachers are ordinary, but their, you know, their input.
John Bacon?
Thank you. I was just going to chime in here a little bit on the timing. You know, it's unfortunate Randy isn't here, because I think this was his idea, and because I think, I think, you know, the one o'clock and the nine o'clock in the morning is probably a problem for a lot of people, especially if the people we want to hear from are parents. So, and that's the first group here, that we're
We're asking them to take that
So, you know, maybe, and Jim, you were talking about if we're gonna use technology, and I think what I heard you saying was you wanted to maybe find other ways to get information from the public other than attending these meetings, if we had something on
Correct.
website where they could weigh in.
That would be one remedy, yes.
So maybe, a possibility might be cutting the number of meetings in half, and then using technology for the other part of, if we'd get a similar, or even better, information from the public, if we made it more convenient for them to respond, or to give us input.
Good suggestion.
So just some ideas, I think there's a, we could, we could work on this a little bit and make it better.
Ken Willard?
Well, I'm just wondering if we just used those same dates and did a five to seven. I mean, it'd be some night driving for some of us, but not for the general public, for the most part, and probably would get larger attendance than having these, I, it is a problem, I think, having these morning sessions, especially the morning sessions.
Well, I
We've got some of them on the same day, yeah.
Yeah, we've got some on the same day.
Well.
Several on the same
Yeah, that's right.
Sally Cobble? Excuse me, Sally Cobble?
Thank you. I know I've spoken to this once, but, you know, I want to piggyback on what Carolyn said. The majority of my parents in western Kansas work for someone. They have to ask for time off, they have to ask for vacation days to do this, even as site council members. And I know some of them are shift workers, but I think by holding something during the day like this, I am really concerned. We drive at night out in western Kansas all the time. We go, you know, we go hunting at night with our cars for deer, but they can, they can, you know, even, you know, I'd just like to see something start a little later, at least give them an opportunity to participate. We have limited ourselves already, and some of those that you said could participate by media, well, they have to go to the library to be able to do that. They don't have it in their homes, except for those school districts that have iPads and then, you know, yeah, but I, they're not used to communicating that way. I'm just really concerned.
Okay. Kathy Bush?
I don't really have anything new to add, but I just would echo my concern also in whether it's western Kansas or an urban area like Wichita. You know, during the day, you're gonna get some folks, certainly, some folks can make arrangements to come, but not very many. You know, it'll just, it'd be tough. I'd like to at least try to do a four to six, or a five to seven, I mean, later in the day, so folks, if they have, they're working, they could at least maybe get off a little early instead of taking the whole afternoon. And I like the idea of doing something electronically, but I do think we need to look at our constituents and, you know, what kind of, who do we want to talk to? And I think we want to talk to our parents, and we want to talk to our community members, that includes our educators, so, and, you know, they're working.
I would also add, just, I think Brad obviously is listening, and Randy may not be here, but he's certainly listening, we're sending a strong message as a board, that we would really like to see the times adjusted so it would improve the opportunity for groups that probably would not have the time off, could make one of the sessions. You know, I realize that whenever you do anything, you're going to, by your scheduling of your time, you're going to exclude some and include others, but I would have to agree that it would be in the best interest of this visioning and opportunity that we provide some later-in-the-day opportunities for people to get there, you know. Jim Porter, excuse me.
I would suggest, Brad, is this appropriate to, or is this gonna be discussed tomorrow at the council meeting? I would suggest that this problem be let out to the superintendents and ask them how that's all.
Good suggestion.
As a data point.
Good. Ken Willard?
Well, my concern is that, I guess, we open ourselves up to some pretty sharp criticism, I think, from people who would like to participate. There really is a strong appetite out there to communicate with us now, whether it's positive or negative. There are a lot of people who would like to talk with us, and I think we could easily be accused of deliberately eliminating some of those people if we stuck with the schedule. Again, I understand the good faith effort to put the schedule together, but I just think we need to review it.
Good. Jenna Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recognize and I share the same concerns everyone has expressed. Here's a suggestion, just a suggestion. Why don't we, whenever they determine to have them, keep track of who attends, and I mean, by who attends, what they represent, okay? Administration, teachers, parents, business, community, whatever. And then after it's all over, because we're not going to really be discussing all of this until probably June, or whenever we do our retreat, I think we would have an opportunity after this, then to maybe, let's say we have a lack of business attending, maybe then we could concentrate on getting together with some chambers or some other business groups, you know, to get their specific input, or if it's parents, I mean, to kind of reach out to these other groups if we see a shortage of input from those, you know, so anyway, just a thought. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. I would add a couple of items that maybe are a little different than what we've been talking about, but I don't want to leave that, this issue, until, I think we've sent a strong message as a board to Randy and to Brad, that we would like to see the times altered and make sure we're reaching out, and as was said here, you know, we might send out a bad message if we didn't do it. So I think our message is clear to Randy and to Brad. One of the things that I've found in my past life, in terms of making sure that these are successful, is by providing a venue and an opportunity for people to see what the results are, to be very open and transparent in this. So I have not yet seen the process that we'll use in these, and that's always very important, and I'm sure the process will be good, but the second part of that, Brad, I would certainly encourage us to be very open and have this online and available, and reports to groups, and possibly feedback to individuals, you know, following, that they're getting the same information we are. You know, I've heard before, not this group, but, you know, groups, well, they have these open houses, or they have these dialogues, and you cherry pick what you want to hear. We want to hear everything, and I think the people want to hear everything. So that's, I think it's vitally important that we have a way of communicating after each one of these sessions, you know, what took place, what the feedback was, in a form and a way that clearly demonstrates that we're being transparent through the whole process. Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to put a word in for bias, that is to say, we all bring our biases to these sorts of meetings. I was privileged to actually be trained in the facilitation of public forums at Kansas State. A three-day workshop from the Institute for, what is it, Democracy and Civil Discourse, or something like that, I don't remember the name of it, but it was wonderful training, and I've participated in several public forums on behalf of state government and various organizations. It's so easy to bring our biases, so, so easy to bring our biases to these meetings. And so I would hope that the initial planning includes an extra effort to welcome input from all stakeholders, because it's just, it's just so incredibly easy. Well, to give you my example, you know, I think every child should practice their arithmetic. That's one of my biases. And it's so easy to skew a meeting like this with a bias. And so if, in our initial planning, if we truly are committed to being unbiased and open, we'll have a better opportunity to gauge what the public really, really wants to tell us.
Well, I think, Brad, you guys have your marching orders, and we look forward to Randy and you reporting back to us regarding the changes and responsibilities that we've outlined here today. Thank you very much for your input, I think that was very important in this process, and I think Randy and Brad are very, will be very happy to have that, or to receive Moving forward, our next agenda item is, oh, we're gonna do, okay. Dale is going to provide his legislative report to us now, instead of at the end of the day. It's always good to have this legislative report before lunch. Dale, thank you.
That was nice, Mr. Chairman. It's good to be here. Okay, we're gonna give you some information, a lot of this just come off the press, kinda, and, let's go ahead, let's go to the House and just keep going. Let me tell you, this week, this, well, for new board members, we only got one, we get the honor of every bill introduced, getting remotely, indirectly, or close to education, you have to write a fiscal, explain it and write a fiscal note. So things are moving, we got four this morning, and it'll be that way for a while. This is a House Committee agenda for this week, but there's two important things, I think, for, that I wanted to mention. That is, today, the Teacher of the Year team will meet jointly with the House and the Senate Education Committees in Room 112 North, at 130. Tomorrow, they'll also meet jointly, and we'll hear a report from the K-12 Proficiency Efficiency Committee. They'll do that sometimes, early in the session, meet jointly, but normally they do not. They'll get their own bills. normally they do not. They'll get their own bills. That's the big follow-up. The third item I mentioned to you is on Friday, the Budget Director will review his budget with the Senate Ways and Means and the House Appropriations Committee, which is very, very important. Now, Thursday evening, we need to be here by 5:30, and you have to be seated on the fourth floor by 6 o'clock. They're sticking to the rules pretty tight, so you need to be here ready to go. And also, please, here, please, please have your badges. John, show them your badge. So, everybody, you got that, dude? That's significant. There you go. But be sure you got your badge with you, because they may ask you for it.
This one won't suffice.
It'd be better if you had your, the real one.
Okay.
With me? Yes.
Yes, yes.
Be better if you had the one from the state of Kansas. That right there, John's got, that's really nice. State official badge. That looks like a, that's like a get in a parking lot or something.
You gave it to me.
One like John's got there, and the official badge of state of Kansas on it is important. Now, when, we'll take you up to the fourth floor, and there'll be, then we'll turn you over to security, and security, there'll be reserved seats there for you. In all likelihood, you'll be introduced as a group before the speech begins. Yeah, is everybody, will everybody be here on Thursday evening? Okay. Pardon? Thursday evening, you don't have to worry about it, because they don't do any after 5. But, so, we got, what, eight? I said, who will not be here? Kathy and who else?
Probably me. I'll just stay in my office.
Okay, then go upstairs. Okay, that's fine. So, we need to have eight, plus, I think there'll be a commissioner here too also be there, one of them. Okay. I also gave you a listing of the House and Senate Education Committee members. You'll notice that the House has new leadership in the Education Committee. Remember last year, Chairman was Cash Kelly. This year, it's Representative Ron Hyland, and the Vice Chairman is Jerry Lund from Overland Park. Last year, it was the, what was his name, Board Cassidy from St. Francis. The, there's some minor changes in the House Aid Committee, but very minor. People that, like Kay Wolf is not in the, didn't run, I think, and Molly Bumgardner from the Johnson County Lewisburg area will be there. And a new member there also is, I think, Steve Fitzgerald. I believe he's new. And Ralph Ossmeyer is not on the Senate Aid Committee, which he was last year. So, you got the committee members. The other thing we gave you, I think, Craig, yeah, just on the court suit, just a little bit. We'll give you more than you want, and if, about this, and if you get technical, I, Mark would be loved to expouse. But the bottom line is that the court ruled that what the base should be, it wasn't exact, but it was, they gave the legislature a little flexibility. But the bottom line is on that, it'll be appealed to the Supreme Court. That appeal will probably go in within the next two weeks, 10 days, prior to the 30-day cutoff, and then there'll probably be an official answer from the court, I don't know, six months down the road, something like that, probably in May. That'd be in the vicinity. Craig, what else we got? Craig, do we have, we give them everything we got. And is there any questions you got for us? The, it's, this is not new. The Governor of State of the State and his budget will drive the train. That's not new. That'll be, everything will start from that. And we will get the paper copy on Friday morning, and then we'll be briefed later, next, later on, probably the following Tuesday, on an oral presentation or review on what's in the budget. But if we get the paper copy, well, that'll give us quite a ways down the road as to what we need to do. Anything else you think that we forgot about? Anything else that you want to, that we haven't told you about, forgot about? There's going to be numerous big issues, but you already know what those are. Revenue will be an issue, or lack thereof will be an issue. I don't know, is the, I think a lot of the legislature will wait until the Supreme Court responds. That's not unusual. That's what happened last time. I think that'll happen again. And any questions? Anybody's got?
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dale, the legislative conference calls are scheduled on our calendar, so those will occur at that regular time.
Unless you say no.
Okay.
It's easy, it's simple, it don't cost much, and for those that want to participate, they may, and those that are busy and can't, so be it. So, the answer is yes, unless somebody tells us no.
Thank you.
Any other?
Other questions? Comments?
Brad, any more look? I think you've got the background. It'll be an interesting session. I promise you that.
We'll hold you to that promise.
All right, you got it. And if you are not here at 5:30, the Board Secretary, I'm not sure what she, but she has some things in mind to be sure that you're properly
5:30 Thursday night.
Thursday night, that's right. Oh, you're
I'm giving you the tickets.
Oh, I thought she was going to do something to make sure they were here. Okay. Yeah, she did say, I'm going to give you the tickets. So, that's fine. Anything else from anybody? All right, thank you very, very
Thank you, Dale. Well, that's our morning agenda. We get to GOE. Let's talk about, uh-oh, he's back.
One more thing. Just thought you'll know about it. We just got a call on this in the last couple of days. Next week, what's the date today? 13. Next week, why, we've been asked to go to the House Aid Committee and to review our website. They thought there was so much on there, and the chairman, he likes to do that, and the Education Committee. So, we're going to do a brief review of what's on the website and where they can go to look for what and how. Thing is, there's a computer on there that'll let you compute some data and sort it and so, easily, like one click and so. So, we're going over that next week, but that'll be on next week's calendar.
Thank you. We will be in recess until our calendar time of 1:30. Excuse me? So, I know you feel like the need to stay here, but it is one, it is, we will not be, we're out until 1:30. Thank you.